Okay. My name is Chris Muntz. I'm chairperson of the Hampton Democratic Committee, and I want to welcome you all to this in the first of our series of virtual town hall meetings with our candidates for state representative. The purpose of these meetings is to give you, the voters, an opportunity to hear from and ask questions of the five Democrats who want to represent you in Hampton. They are Rennie Cushing, Mike Edgar, Catherine Herrocky, Tom Lockman, and Elaine Andrews-Aherne. We will be holding these sessions every Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM until August 12th. For more information on our candidates and to sign up for the future meetings, please go to our website, and encourage your friends to do so as well. Tonight's town hall will be with State Representative Robert Rennie Cushing. Rennie was born and raised in Hampton and still lives in his childhood home on Winnicott Road. He has represented Hampton in Concord between 1996 and 1998, 2008 and 2010, and since 2012. He's currently the chairperson of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee of the New Hampshire House of Representatives, where he led the fight to repeal the death penalty, protect New Hampshire's elderly, disabled, and vulnerable citizens, defend victims of crime and domestic violence, and ensure equal opportunity for all of Hampton's and New Hampshire's residents. Not only is he our longest-serving state representative, but he is the heart and soul and conscience of the Hampton Democrats. Having served with him in Concord for two years, I can tell you that we are very lucky to have him representing us in Concord. Rennie's going to say a few words, and while he's doing that, I'm going to put everybody on mute, and then we'll open it up for some questions. And without further ado, it's my great pleasure to introduce my friend and our state representative, Rennie Cushing.
Well, thank you, Chris. And I guess I want to welcome everybody to my campaign headquarters, to my studio live from my kitchen at 395 Winnicott Road. We've got the state flag up. We've got the campaign signs. And per Chris's directives, I'm wearing the official Hampton Democrats shirt. So, and I'm the first of the candidates to go forward in this meeting. I think one of the things that's taken place because of the COVID-19 pandemic is that our whole notion of what it's going to mean to campaign and to ask people for their vote has kind of been thrown up in the air. We're all in the process of learning how to work in this environment. And I'm pleased that Chris has taken the initiative to host these town meetings. We'll learn a lot, I'm sure, as we go through this process. But it's not just Chris that I want to thank. I also want to thank Melanie and Mary and Jennifer for their leadership in our town and my colleagues, Mike and Pat, and who we're going to miss, and Tom. And I'm glad that Catherine is stepping up. And I also want to give a shout out and acknowledgement to Erica for being so important to our Team Hampton activities. So, one of the things that this campaign, having to operate in the virtual means, will preclude is me having the opportunity to knock on doors and wonder if it's going to be somebody I used to play football with or have the opportunity to converse with folks and tell them stories about, yeah, I know your house. I used to pick the garbage up there when I was working for the town in high school. And then the occasional awkward moments where it's somebody that you remember but you didn't get along very well with. But that's part of my campaign. That will not happen now in this. And it's strange for me. I usually anchor stuff by saying that this last month, on June 14th, marked the 100th anniversary of Daniel and Elizabeth Cushing getting married and Elizabeth Reynolds getting married in Manchester, coming to Hampton Beach on their honeymoon, and then deciding they weren't going to leave. So, with this centennial of my family being in town, it speaks to a number of things for me. One, that it grounds me a lot in our community. It's, you know, I had the great fortune of growing up in a town where I went to school in the same building that my father went to school in. And I got to go to school as a parent in the same school to visit my kids that they grew up in center schools and get to be able to be a coach for the same youth league that I used to be a player in. And that's important to me because it's the lens through which I try to approach all the work that I do in Concord as a legislator. I can't help but take Hampton with me because that's where I'm coming back to. But I also have the life experience that takes place. I don't have any illusions about everything being totally idyllic in this town. And I'm also on this state. And I'm also somebody who's very fortunate that in part of my family values and my life experience shapes me so that I have a consciousness and awareness of the need to create a society where everybody is respected, everybody is included, that I try to be conscious of notions about justice and equity and make that part of the work that I do as a legislator. I've had the opportunity to be a, to serve in the minority in the New Hampshire Legislature and also serve in the majority. I will tell you that the majority is much better. And I also have to say why it's really important that this election that we proceed as a team in Hampton, because I want to do something historic. And that is, for the first time, send a delegation to the State House from the town of Hampton, where all five members are Democrats. Because I think that will ensure that the Democrats are in the majority and will ensure that we can carry out the program that will meet the needs of the people of our state and meet the needs of people in our community. And one of the things that I think distinguishes Democratic representation from Republican representation is our accessibility and accountability. I remember going back to when Chris served as the state representative from Hampton, taking the initiative that has continued on, where Democrats hold regular listening sessions, office hours, accountability, where people have the opportunity to come and speak to people. And that's what I think, in many ways, this virtual town hall is modeled upon the Democratic imprimatur, the Democratic stamp of how, as legislators, we try to be responsive and accessible to the people in our community. And I think that when the five of us go to Concord, that's going to mean, for instance, that it will mean that Mike Edgar will continue to be sitting at the table helping to shape the state's capital budget, helping to shape the state's 10-year highway plan and making sure that the interests of the people of Hampton and the needs of the people of the seacoast are represented, that they have a voice. And not just a voice, but an influential voice, which is part of what is involved in this election and in this race. I serve on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. I'm the chair of it. And I do that in part because during my lifetime, when I'm not a legislator, I spent a couple decades working with victims of crime, working with survivors and victims of homicide. And over the past course of two or three decades, I've been responsible for enactment of some of the most progressive crime victims' rights statutes of anywhere in the country. And I've done that, working not just inside the legislature, but trying to work with community allies, with people who are stakeholders in it, and partnering with organizations like the Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Violence. And I've done that for 30 years, and it kind of continued this year. In fact, just yesterday, I was part of the bill signing ceremony that sent along to the governor, House Bill 705, which is legislation that I had really had sponsored originally, starting at the beginning of the session, had worked on in my committee for a year and a half, had sent that bill over to the Senate, even when the COVID-19 crisis hit. And I was fortunate that it did not die in March, that there was enough of a concern so that House Bill 705 made it through a process. It was melded together with four other pieces of legislation. But what it provides for is increasing access to victims' assistance for people who've been victimized. It refines our state victim assistance laws to provide for greater security and privacy and protections for victims. It'll establish a program to have a system of training and standards for victims' advocates. It will require the Attorney General's Office to prepare a comprehensive statute book of all crime victims' laws. And also included in it is, melded with other things, were the first most comprehensive protocol and laws in place to govern sexual assault on campuses. It will provide for, lifts the statute of limitations for victims of childhood sexual abuse and incest so that they are never denied access to the court to have justice that they seek. And it also will end a kind of a scurrilous practice of misleading practices of selling rape kits over the counter with a false promise that that's actually going to have any kind of value when we all know that what's most important is when you're victimized, that you have access to hands-on work with real people who understand and will protect you. I'm waiting for the governor to sign that. Another bill that I've been involved in that's somewhat timely was sent to the governor on Monday, and that is an omnibus criminal justice reform bill, which will do a number of things. It will ban private prisons, which really is consistent with our state's constitutional requirement that, or promise and requirement, that the purpose of incarceration is rehabilitation and not extermination. And we're going to remove forever the idea that the incarceration of human beings should be a profit center. It's not. It'll also require that all members of law enforcement undergo past psychological screening for fitness of the job. It's one thing to be able to be proficient and have an affinity to firearms and to be in good shape. But it's another thing altogether to be entrusted with carrying those, with holding people, with incapacitating them, with enforcing the laws and using deadly force without having some assurance that the person who is given that authority is responsible for that. And it's been something we neglected to do for the past 23 years, and I'm glad it's finally going to happen now. Another thing that we'll do is require mandatory reporting for members of law enforcement who see misconduct, who see law breaking amongst their fellow officers of the law. Right now, we have in the state of New Hampshire mandatory reporting for people who see that there's child abuse. And it ought to be at least equally a requirement that people who see law enforcement misconduct be required to report that. And finally, particularly given the time that we're in, there will be a ban on the use of police chokeholds in the state of New Hampshire. And I think in some, again, unique to the circumstances of the pandemic, this process was not very pretty. It involved, we always, sometimes we talk kiddingly that legislating is kind of like sausage making. You really don't want to see what it looks like, but you just enjoy the final product. Well, this situation, we've kind of been doing virtual sausage making in trying to do the process of taking disparate ideas and notions and putting them together, but coming up with a product that I think, actually, the state of New Hampshire can and should be proud of. And hopefully, the governor will sign that. A couple of other areas of concern that aren't directly related to criminal justice, but I've been involved in working with Pat and Mike and Tom, relate to our legislation that was passed that will put into law the standards for maximum contaminant levels for PFAS in our drinking water and also provide a system, a mechanism by which, in recognition of the dangers to public health that's posed by PFAS and other toxic chemicals, that we have a mechanism in place to ensure that there are funds available for us to clean up the toxins that come from PFAS. And that was kind of a hard-fought battle, but that passed. And so, we will have available the capacity for municipalities to start now to clean up that drinking water, knowing and fully expecting that the lawsuit that the state of New Hampshire has joined against the manufacturers of PFAS, who for a half-century knew that the product that they were putting on the market posed a danger to public health and to the health of individuals and did nothing about it. But as we move forward with that and hopefully, and will be successful to that, capture that and return the, and make the communities whole, make the investments that have been necessary to protect public health, make them whole because of making the polluters pay. And that's important. And one other bill that I think that that's on its way to the governors. And another bill that's on its way to the governors that, again, was great having the Hampton team on, relates to medical monitoring. People who've been exposed to toxins shouldn't have to wait until they've been decimated, until their public health, until their health has been devastated, to be able to receive, collect damages from those who knowingly expose them to toxins. And what this medical monitoring bill that was worked on for a year and a half does is provide kind of a streamlined mechanism that builds upon the existing common law right to recover damages and makes a specific mechanism in place that's consistent with that, that will allow, for instance, families whose children have been exposed to toxic chemicals, to PFAS, to get the entities responsible for harming them to pay to have their public health monitored with the hope that early detection and early monitoring may provide the opportunity for appropriate medical interventions to prevent the implications of that from being deadly. So, those are just some of the, those are the things that I've worked on that are on their way to the governor. And I will be glad to talk about stuff that I've worked on that is not going to make it to the governor. But that might fall under the category of what I want to do if I'm reelected. One of those will be wanting to make sure that drinking water standards that we have for public water, for the water that comes out of our tap, are the same standards that apply to water when we buy it from a water distributor or we buy it from grocery stores, that the maximum contaminant level for all drinking water should be uniform. And it's really important because it's drinking water. And other pieces of legislation that I did not do, did not fare as well as I might have liked or we might have liked, that have a more direct impact upon the town of Hampton and other communities, include a restoration of the state's partnership with local communities when it comes to law enforcement and it comes to first responders and when it comes to teachers. When Republicans ran the state a decade ago, they walked away from a 35-year promise that was made to the communities that the state would shoulder a portion, 35%, actually, a portion of the retirement cost of those first responders and teachers. And when they walked away, the result was, and zero-funded that, it was the largest broad-based increase in taxes in the history of the state. Because when they walked away, the state walked away from its responsibility, it shifted the entire burden upon local property taxpayers. And it's been a struggle that we've been engaged in for a decade now, unfortunately, to try to repair that damage that was done by the Republicans when the Republican delegation represented Hampton. The past year, we made significant progress in that the measure to do that actually passed the House. Unfortunately, it fell, by the way, during the budget process. But it's something I'm committed to want to continue to do. And I would just make the observation about something that didn't happen, but something that did happen is that because of the work of the Democrats, but particularly, I think, Hampton delegation played a strong part in this, is that this year's operating budget, for the first time in six or eight years, restored funding for the program that is the state aid grants, that is the sharing of the burden for water and sewer projects. And so, that has meant that, for the first time in a decade, that actually, the town of Hampton is receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional monies each year to help underwrite the cost of the sewer projects that we've been doing for the past few years. And I think that, again, speaks to the effectiveness and the importance of having democratic voices that are concerned about the community and the impact that the state's action has upon it will do. And finally, just to segue to the other project that I've been working on that in part relates to a notion of both tax fairness and also environmental justice. Believe it or not, the state of New Hampshire has had a policy in place where it has set up a scheme a half, 45 years ago, that mandates the exemptions of certain portions of projects that the state would deem to be considered pollution for the purpose of pollution control. And without giving any choice to the local communities, just says, you will not be able to include this in your property tax base. And the big beneficiaries of that have been our large-scale power plants, including the Merrimack Plant in Bow, the Portsmouth Coal Wood Plant, and Seabrook Station. What that, as a practical matter, means is that Hampton has had taken out of its tax base hundreds of millions of dollars worth of funds, and it has cost the town, again, and hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars in revenue over the years. And that's revenue that has to get made up by other property taxpayers. And it simply makes no sense for us to continue to subsidize obsolete forms of energy production. I got further than that this year than ever before, but I think the tide is turning. And I'm hoping that with leadership, we'll be able to eliminate that. So, I babble on a little bit, and I realize this is a town meeting style, a town meeting event. I may have veered into a stump speech. But I'm the first one doing this, so this is the prototype. And I guess I can just ask if there are any questions. But before I ask any questions, I do have to say one thing, and that's thank you. Thank you to everybody who took the time to zoom in. And thank you to everybody that does work on behalf of Democrats, on behalf of Democrats both in Hampton, both everywhere. I can't, I mean, I watch the news every night, and my head wants to explode because of what's happening in this country. And it is just so dire and so serious. And this election, this election is really important. We have to work together to deal with the traumatic experience that we're all subject to.
Okay. Well, thank you, Rennie. And as Rennie said, I mean, if there's anyone that has a question, we'll kind of do the free-form approach. Just the first one, the blurts out, goes first. I see a hand. Erica DeFries, want to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Rennie. It's not hard. We'll see. Has there been any progress in ensuring that Hampton receives its fair share of the revenues that are generated by Hampton Beach State Park to help reimburse Hampton residents for the expenses that we are incurring as taxpayers?
That's a complicated question. I will just say that. I know in the past, there's a couple of ways that Hampton, a number of ways that Hampton benefits. I want to defer to my good friend, Mike Edgar, who's been doing y'all persons' work, trying to take the lead to help us recapture revenues in the form of an addition to the meals and rentals tax. But a couple of areas where the town of Hampton does, you know, obviously makes expenditures of infrastructure that have a direct positive impact on the state, involve the work that we do to help promote the hospitality industry and the collections of rooms and rentals. And I will say that there's been, there's a constant battle in trying to deal with both the cap on that and the apportionment of it. I would like to be able to say that we would magically be able to change the way that monies are apportioned so that communities that, where that money is generated will be able to be a beneficiary of that. I think there's a recognition that if you try to rearrange the money that's in there right now, it's going to be perceived as a zero-sum thing, and people are going to lose. What Mike has done, and he's been supportive, is try to just recognize that it ought to be a local option where people are allowed to do it. I mean, the problem is that not only does the state capture revenue and not share it with the local communities, but it also precludes the local communities from doing anything on its own that might be able to do. I know I have advocated in the past and done legislation in the past that addresses something we talked about earlier that Sonny had raised, and that's the matter of what do we do with revenue? The promise that was made to the town of Hampton in 1933 at the town meeting was that the state of New Hampshire would take control of the beach and build a seawall because the town didn't have the money to build a seawall so that Ocean Boulevard, Route 1A, could be maintained. And that, in exchange, the state of New Hampshire would allow Hampton Beach, would be allowed to collect revenue from parking fees. And what happened over the years, the promise was that the state would have the ability to build a seawall because it could capture funds from people that are driving along the roadways there in the form of the gasoline tax. They take money out of the gas tax, build the seawall, pave the road, and build bridges. The state of New Hampshire made a decision that it was going to reneg on that. And instead of having the seawall paid for with Highway Trust funds, with basically a road user fee, it decided to take the money from the parking revenue and use that to pay the bonds to help construct and help maintain the seawall. So Hampton ends up having the revenue source that it was promised it would get by giving the state the beach in exchange for building a seawall. Hampton ends up taking, having the money that should be going to the town in terms of parking revenues, going to pay for the seawall. It's an equitable situation. I think it's very, it's also tied, quite frankly, so to relations that break down between the town, the beach, the state. I mean, there are like three entities that don't always work in concert, that need to work in concert. And I know, like, some of us, I mean, Pat, what we miss is Pat is serving on Resources Committee, which, one of the reasons we're going to miss her is because Resources does the beach stuff. Hampton Beach State Parks, the crown jewel of that. And I know her and Mike have been really instrumental in trying to promote dialogue and working in concert for everybody's best interest instead of having the beach have one position, the town have another position, the state have another position, and everybody pointing at each other and say, you know, you're getting a free ride. We need to work together, quite frankly.
Rennie, speaking of state parks, I mean, I have a question or a comment from a voter in Hampton who was trying to dial in and just wasn't successful. But I promised her I would read this to you.
Okay.
She said the state park She said, the state park, state parks parking is so inconsistent. Odeon has fifty percent all reserved, Janus a hundred percent all reserved, Wallace fifty percent reserved. But after two, you might get in without a reservation. Hampton South is a fifty percent reservation mandatory. But pass holders, New Hampshire seniors, active veterans encouraged to reserve. But Mike at one of the fifty places held out without reservations. Then there's the parking along the wall at North Beach, no parking after eight P M. According to Chief Sawyer, it's still light and surfers in the water at eight thirty, lack of common sense. And I think her question or point is, it seems that towns in the state are making the rules impossible to keep up. And she says that's a direct quote from the Hampton police officers. Do you have any response to that, any comment?
I mean, the response, the the response is that on on March thirteenth, the governor of the state of New Hampshire declared a state of emergency under the, you know, Emergency Powers Act. And because, and those powers are actually rather extraordinary. And that state of, under that state of emergency, he's issued a number of directives that have the force of law. Those, he he has the ability, I think, you know, every twenty one, every three weeks to to simply reissue the declaration of emergency, and all of those things are in place. So right now, it's actually not the legislators, not even the communities that have, you know, say over how everything will operate. It is the 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 process has been set, is people can make suggestions, the governor can follow them or not. But he signs the executive orders that have the rule, that have a rule of law. So, for instance, everything, the the inconsistency of policy as to what parking may be from, you know, from when it comes to state roads, and and we know that all of one B is a state road from the Mass line, you know, one A and one B are all the way up. So the state has absolute control over that anyways. And to a certain extent, the governor's powers, quite frankly, can can override anything that a municipal municipality would want to do in in its ordinance, should it choose to be. So we are in a situation where we just don't have the authority, we don't have the the power to to do that. We have our voices, and we try to, you know, persuade people to do it. We've got state agencies that are doing the best. But at the end of the day, it's the governor that is making every decision. And that's a little bit disconcerting. I know that, you know, on the one hand, I just alluded to the fact that I can't believe what disaster our country is in right now because COVID nineteen. And on the other hand, there are certain things that I think that we could function, you know, we could both deal with a pandemic and and have a thriving democracy, a vibrant democracy at the same time. But that's that certainly is, that's certainly a challenge that we've been facing here in the state of New Hampshire. And and quite frankly, you know, there was a an effort to assert the legislative role in how funds are being spent, that, you know, the governor took the position that the one point two five billion dollars that 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 came to, you know, the state to respond to the COVID nine crisis, he was gonna make all the decisions about where that money went, and he certainly has to. He cut the legislator legislature out, although there was a law, as I read it, that that the legislature was supposed to continue to function and exercise its responsibilities even during the terms of a of a declaration of of emergency. We haven't, you know, we haven't resolved that. But to the person who asked that question, it's, the governor is making those decisions.
Sonny Kravitz, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got a couple. You mentioned the Public Employees Retirement Fund. I understand Hampton's share, it's deeply in red. I understand Hampton shares a half a million dollar, and you can't pay it off because if you send extra money in, it gets pro rated across the whole state. But that was one problem. Another one is the highway over, after the highway ninety five to Exeter, all those homes were on wells. Which seems to me that it's only reasonable to bring them all online with with the water company because case of fire, where they're gonna get the water. You know, the other aspect is, if I recall, Stratum had a problem with some arsenic in one of the developments, and they wanted to come get the water by the water call, the water company and Hampton objective. I don't know.
So I think it's, I I think that's, Sonny, I I appreciate the, water is an ongoing, is a is a major concern, particularly on the seacoast. I mean, Pat and Mike and I are both on, are all on the, you know, a seacoast water commission. And among the issues that we're trying to deal with are just, you know, what are things that relate to fire suppression, interconnectivity, you know, supply. We have, you know, we have, it's it's a real mixed bag of, you know, we have got Aquarian, a private water company. We've got towns that have, you know, we got a private water company, we got a public sewer company. We got other towns that have public water and 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 public sewer. We have towns that have no sewer that ship their sewer to Hampton. And, you know, again, it's an infrastructure problem. It's a, it's a huge concern that we 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 need to pay attention to. And I know that the commission is trying to do its work. But there are, there are lots of obstacles there. The the question, you know, some of the the conflict between Aquarian interests and the interest of, you know, the communities, not everybody wants to be hooked up to a public water system. Some people that are hooked up to a public water system, the question is, who's gonna bear the burden for the cost for extending pipes? That we've always had a thing in Hampton, not just, you know, not just who gets public water, but also who gets public sewer. That, you know, you know, we have to deal with that. Nobody gets sewer on the on the west side of ninety five, and and there are people who are, you know, they get an adjustment on on somewhat on their property taxes for it. They're just trying to figure out why it is that the that they don't have this basic infrastructure like everybody else in that community does. And again, it's not just we're, we have that, and at the same time, we're tied into, we have political boundaries that don't necessarily overlay with just the realities of of geography. We have a, you know, an estuary that feeds into the Hampton Seabrook Harbor that drains from, you know, North Hampton, from Exeter, from Stratum, from Hampton Falls, Kensington, Seabrook, and Salisbury. All come into that, and we have, you know, we have a little little town by town, you know, barriers between trying to make that comport with the political subdivisions with what the geography is.
Okay, any other other questions, raise your hand if you have one?
Hey, Rennie, can you talk about how climate change is affecting the sea coast?
Yeah, I can talk about how climate change is affecting the sea coast in a number of ways. You know, we, growing up here, we 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 used to have, you know, hundred year and thousand year floods that are now, you know, annual floods. We have a king tide where, you know, because of climate change, we know that some of us know, recognize the sea level is rise, there has been some efforts, I think, you know, stimulated in large part by a study that was done by the Coastal Risk and Hazards Community a few years ago to try to take adaptation strategies to to move forward. I mean, that's had an impact, for instance, on the beach where, you know, it impacts Hampton Beach, obviously, because it's a it's a recreational community, and it's also a residential community. So we've got, you know, new building codes that are trying to to deal with that. But, you know, the reality is, we can't, we we have concerns about flooding. And when the entire, you know, marsh is flooded, it's not like you can pump it out of one place and send it into somebody else. But if we, we are going to be in serious trouble if we don't arrest, you know, global warming. And, you know, you know where I live, you know, it's just, it's a matter of time before many of us here who live uptown think we might have beachfront property, the way things are going. And that that is something I don't mean to be, you know, to make, to be flippant about it. But that's just one area that it does is also, it's, there's saltwater encroachment as a part of that where it's impacting our, our, you know, drink freshwater drinking water because of the 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 rise in the sea level. It's coming into, it's having an impact inland on 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 people's drinking water. It's, you know, it's, it's not statistically insignificant, though it's happening now. It also impacts the way we think of doing infrastructure, how we're gonna do, deal with roadways, how we're gonna impact, you know, public structures, public facilities as this, as sea level come upon us. And it also makes us, to me, on the flip side, it provides a an urgency to find a way to transition to a green economy. I've been, you know, involved in in support of of the development of offshore wind projects for a while. I'm glad that that's going forward. And I I chaired a study committee five years ago that kind of led, that, you know, demonstrated the potential of the Gulf of Maine for a clean energy source and a and a new, you know, new system of of energy. And I I I'm hoping that the, you know, this process began last December to try to characterize offshore wind sites in the Gulf of Maine. I think everything's been put all hold, that's only part of what's covered. But that's going forward in other, you know, other places. And that's part of the, you know, that's part of like a positive green vision for, you know, for New England that I think we need to embrace.
Rennie, I have a, I have a question for you. You know, during this pandemic, we've seen how important essential workers are. And it's interesting how the the definition of essential workers has expanded.
Yeah.
Who include, you know, people like grocery workers and and healthcare workers. And most of those people are unfortunately not very well paid. They struggle, they either don't have health insurance, or it's very expensive. They can't find an affordable place to live. What can we do in New Hampshire in the future to address these inequities?
Well, I mean, at the start, I think we should have a minimum wage. And I think the minimum wage should be fifteen dollars an hour. I think it's crazy that we live in a situation, that we're in a situation now where, you know, for instance, that, you know, we need first first response that, you know, people who are who we recognize are putting themselves in harm's way don't make what should be a living wage. You know, that's, and it's, you know, what, where, who do we value, what do we value, whose work do we do we value? I think is something that the state of New Hampshire needs to take a look at, and and all of our our society needs to take a look at. You know, I was just talking earlier, my my daughter worked for a number of years, she was at Hampton Beach, she was a lifeguard. And, you know, two weeks ago, there's eighty three people, you know, so one day they they rescued eighty three people. And you start thinking about it, who would have thought in terms of what it means in a COVID epidemic to go out and rescue someone, that it also, it's not just about rescuing somebody from the ravages of the surf, but also perhaps putting yourself in danger if that person, after the rescue is made, if that person had was positive for COVID and transmitted it to someone who actually went out to save them. And I don't think we had thought about like lifeguards as being the kind of first responders. I think that we need to have a whole larger conversation in society about the different kinds of work that we have and and why we value. I, you know, I have nothing against, you know, hedge, people working hedge funds. But I, to me, that, you know, the work that they do is not, it's nothing compared to the people who are bagging groceries at Hannaford these days, you know. Without them, you know, these are people who providing the stuff that's really essential to us as people. And I can't believe what we're doing to, you know, people who are on the first first response, people in our, in the healthcare industry, you know, people who are empty in bedpans, need to be part of the conversation we have about what, you know, our healthcare system is gonna look like that works for everybody. Because they're valuable, you know, they they are valuable, they're essential if we're gonna have a healthy society. We need to recognize them and treat them with dignity and pay them a living wage.
Rennie, can I, if I could piggyback on that one, could we, I think Chris kind of touched on it. Could you talk a little bit about affordable housing? I mean, I think that's fundamental to the economic development that we need statewide. That that's, that's everywhere. So, and I think affordable housing is is a key element of that. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, affordable housing, workplace housing, we do not have, I'm, I serve and I, we don't serve. According to the Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, we need thirty thousand, thirty thousand units, just a rental unit of of affordable housing. And affordable housing means that, you know, you should not spend more than forty percent of your income on on housing. And there, I think there are a lot of reasons why we we have such a shortage. But, you know, whether you call it affordable, the term of our issues is workforce, workforce housing. But the notion is, you, how can you, you ought to have a community where the people who are your teachers, where the people are your firefighters, where the people who are picking up, you know, your your trash, the people who are bagging your groceries ought to be able to afford to live in the community where they work and they serve you and be part of it. And we need to make sure, you know, we that that we create conditions that will encourage the the development of workforce force housing, of of affordable housing. I think that means changes in our, you know, regulations and density. I think that that you can't, the other thing you can't really talk about, you could talk about solutions to the housing also require investments in transportation. Because part of the, part of the, what you need to do is, as you, you know, provide for population density, provide for different ways that you can make dwelling, living units, dwelling units more affordable. Part of that involves the ability to people to continue to to work where they live. And, you know, we just can't have three point five cars per each, you know, each dwelling unit when most people would just as soon be able to have another alternative. If that may, you know, that makes sense. I tell you, Pat, one of the things that, you know, we didn't even talk, I was gonna get into mental health care, that's another thing. But we, you know, we have a lot of unmet needs in the state. But because I'm on a, I'm on a commission, the governor appointed a commission on corrections and, you know, and and mental illness. And one of the things about that, that nexus between our corrections and and mental health care, that both for people who are, you know, involuntarily, whoever meant, who are people who have a, you know, issue with mental health, that sometimes need, require hospitalization. And that that results in, you know, the state of New Hampshire, the Department of Corrections is the largest single provider of mental health care services in the state of New Hampshire. They end up, that's where we send people. One of the problems they have in trying to just both step people who are, who have, you know, are in the process of getting better from their mental health issues is, gets back to the issue of housing. One of the things that we, you know, people are not ready to get real, people aren't ready to, you know, how do we deal with over incarceration in our in our state prisons? People timeout, there's no place for them to go. It is that, it is, the housing is just such a huge place. And the answer is just not to bring, you know, to set up outhouses on the banks of the Merrimack River in Manchester to make it easier for homeless people to go to the bathroom. The answer is to real, to deal with the 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 problem, the homelessness and to see it, you know, as as a problem and to see it as like, a lot of people end up being homeless, not because they, that was their life's ambition. It's just that things happen and they lose their homes, and it's hard for them to get, you know, to get their legs underneath them. Just anecdotally, you know, we know that from Hampton, we always used to have a lot of people, you know, we always had people winter rentals here in the town. And that was part of like a cycle, it was always, you know, part of what the Hampton population was. And I had a like a conversation with Richie, with the with the chief, and he's just said the past couple of years that that, that like the winter rentals are not, no longer the same like the old winter rentals used to be. I wonder where those people are, but because of, you know, the winter rentals have just become too pricey now. You know, I don't know, that's.
Okay, do we have any other, any other questions? Sonny, Sonny, do you have one more?
I can't read, I can't read, you look, Sonny.
Hold on, Sonny, we're unmuting you. Sonny, you're unmute. Well, Sonny, I'm sorry, I'm trying to unmute you, but I can't. We'll have to. There you go.
My biggest problem is, how do we get Mike his cookies? Because he bought my boat ever, his wife's got a, you know. His wife's got a, you know...
Well, he wanted to know how we could, how we could get Mike Edgar's cookies, which is a fabulous segue to the fact that next week, at this, at this same time, Mike Edgar will be holding a virtual town hall meeting. And Sonny, I think that would be a great first question for him. How does he get a steady supply of Kathy Edgar cookies?
Yeah, I think that's true.
So, I want to...
And I think it's quite, actually, I think a steady supply of Kathy Edgar cookies are going to be key to this fall's election.
That's right.
I couldn't agree with you more.
I'll let Kathy know.
So, Rennie, before we sign off, any final words of wisdom you want to share with everyone?
No, I just wear, you know, I just want to say thank you to people. And we really do need to, we really do need to run the table, so to speak. We really need to, Team Hampton needs to, needs to roll up there. I cannot emphasize that, how important that is. And you know, Chris, you know, we're a purple town. If, you know, if Hampton has, if every, if Hampton has an all Democratic rep, the Dems are going to control the legislature. If Hampton doesn't have a Democratic legislature, delegation, the Republicans are going to control. That's just, that's data.
Okay, so, again, thank, thank you, Rennie. And for anyone that is watching this recording, who wanted to participate in the town hall meeting live, my apologies, we will do a better job next week. And we will be having another town hall, this time with Mike Edgar, next Wednesday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM. To sign up for that session, you can go to our website, which is, oop, right over here, And if you're interested in volunteering and helping out, you should go there as well, and we'll have some information on how you can, how you can do that. So again, thank you, Rennie.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for all your service. We're thrilled that you're running again, and good luck to everyone.
I missed that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.